Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 19th, 2021. The time is 9:00 a.m. Board of County Commissioners is in session for our open business meeting. We have Commissioner Davidson with us in the room today. Commissioner Beck, good morning. Commissioner Beck is on bridge with us this morning, as well as on...
Good morning, I'm here.
Good morning, good to see your smiling face. And we have Bethany Kelly, Thomas Ott, Steve Rutherford on bridge. And then in the room, I'll start with you, Bob, and we'll go around.
Bob Batista, Expo Idaho.
Steve Hippler, Administrative District Judge.
Richard Back, Development Services.
Tony Geddes, Your Public Defender.
Bob Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Lorna Jorgensen, Prosecutor's Office. Heather Lee, Recording. Elizabeth Duncan, Communication.
Lieutenant Shade, IT.
Trent Triple, Clerk's Office.
Bob McQuaid, Assessor.
Beth Ma, Treasurer.
Great, all right, welcome, everyone. Any changes to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, there are not.
All right, then, we're going to start with unfinished business, and I'll need a motion.
I move to remove the unfinished business from the table.
Okay, I'll second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, I just have it, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're going to start then with, let's see. We could take these all up at once, but I'm going to ask Commissioner Becker, Commissioner Davidson, if they have any, wanted to have any conversation or dialogue on any of these.
Yes, Madam Chair. So I asked for these to be polled at the last meeting. These are all contracts between Ada County and private attorneys who can serve as conflict public defenders for Ada County. And the reason I asked to have these polled is to give a little closer look at it. One area I'm, you know, been concerned with for a while is the public defender system in general and whether or not defendants are getting adequate defenses. And historically, the public defender system has had the problem of being underfunded and loading up lawyers with too many cases. And so that has kind of led to individuals not being able to get good defenses. And so I wanted to do a little bit more research. I wanted to meet with Tony Geddes, our public defender, and just get some more information. And I asked for records of all the cases that these conflict public defenders have worked on for Ada County. And we went through those. You know, and I was surprised to find, you know, we're talking hundreds of cases between, you know, six to eight attorneys or so. One concern I had was that with all these felonies, misdemeanors, it looks like only one went to trial in 2021, which, you know, leads to the suspicion that things are getting plea bargain that otherwise could go to trial. However, to be fair, 2021 is kind of an exceptional year for not having trials, thanks to COVID. So it's tough to come to a conclusion just based on the one year. But one lawyer out of this list sort of stood out for having what could be considered an excessive amount of cases. That was Randy Barnum with a total of 147 cases, where if you look at the rest, I mean, the average is about 40, 40 to 50. I also did a Google search online. It looks like Mr. Barnum is also taking conflict cases for GEM County. I can't confirm that, but that's what it says online. And there were some other issues that had me concerned. But overall, in talking with our public defender, we, to cut any of these attorneys or to not renew their contracts would put quite a burden on our public defender system. I was glad to hear that it's in the process of being alleviated by trying to hire additional counsel to serve, to take some of these cases and spread them out a little bit more. So in talking with Tony, I said I was going to put forward a motion to put through all these contracts, but pulling, tabling Mr. Barnum for additional discussion. And we talked about possibly putting a provision in the contract to cap the total number of cases that he can take per year. As you may know, the U.S. Supreme Court has laid out a certain threshold for the amount of cases a public defender can take per year before it becomes unconstitutional. I don't know that exact number, but anyways, I think that would be in the interest of Ada County and our citizens. So I'm going to move that we table agreement number 13514-2-21 and move that the rest of the proposed agreements move forward.
Okay, do we have a second?
Do we have a time certain on the tabling? I have a question. Is there, is there a time certain on the tabling?
Is one week sufficient?
We're working at it, hold on.
I think one week should be okay.
I think that's the 26th, October 26th.
All right, so I move to table until October 26th. And that would be specifically so that the contract could be rewritten to limit the number of cases to an amount specified in the Supreme Court? With discussions with our public defender to come up with an appropriate amount of cases.
You want to restate your motion?
All right.
I don't know if you're just pulling F or you're pulling all of them, or what are you doing?
So, okay, the motion would be to table F, Agreement Number 13514-2-21, to October 26th for further discussion with the public defender to look at inserting a clause in the contract to limit the number of cases and to put all additional agreements through?
To approve them.
To approve the additional agreements.
You read the motion, Commissioner?
I would, I would second the motion.
Okay, before we take a vote, I'll give our public defender an opportunity to make any comments, as he sees fit.
Thank you, Madam Chair, temporary, I present. So, yeah, I met with Commissioner Davidson, and while the Supreme Court has not specified a particular caseload number, they've left it up to individual jurisdictions to make that determination. There definitely is the understanding that too many cases can interfere with constitutional obligation of appropriate representation. So Idaho, right now, has a caseload standard of no more than 400 misdemeanors a year, no more than 150 felonies a year. Commissioner Davidson's point in regard to Mr. Barnum is accurate. His cases are probably above that threshold, and he's probably going to get into some hot water from the Public Defense Commission when he files his annual report in, on November 1st. Just to give you some context, we lost two of our conflict attorneys who handle complex litigation cases. One I had to terminate the contract, the other one gave up the practice of law to become a motivational speaker. So two of the heavy hitters, if you will, on my contract are no longer there. Randy Barnum is one of the individuals who can handle those complex litigation cases, so he's taken up a lot of that slack. So I think what you see is a high caseload that is not typical. We have and are working with Bethany to post an advertisement for more conflict attorneys. That should come out this week. I've already signed up two additional conflict attorneys, both of whom can take bigger cases. So we're already starting to alleviate that burden. But in talking to Commissioner Davidson yesterday, I'm happy to amend the contract to put some sort of limiting clause in there. I think that's appropriate, that's fine.
You have any problems with the motion then, in that timeline?
I do.
Okay, then we'll go ahead. All those in favor state aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, I just have it, motion carries. All right, so Andy, you're good with that motion? Compensating all of it, all right? We're going to go ahead then to new business. I'm going to open the public hearing on Resolution 2680, Resolution to Convert Ladybird Park to property adjacent to the Boise River. Do you have anyone that would like to provide testimony?
Do you have to open a public hearing?
I did. Yes, Liz, is that you?
That, here, here I am.
Okay, go ahead and state your name for the record, and you'll have up to two minutes.
All right, my name is Elizabeth Paul, and I'm living across from Expo Idaho, across the Boise River for 31 years. And I, while I'm not an expert at all things having to do with Ladybird Park, I, the resolution specifically says that commissioners are interested in moving the park to an area adjacent to the Boise River. And the, as you know, the commissioners are in the middle of master planning for that whole Expo Idaho site, for that, for this resolution.
Liz, I'm going to pause you. I'm going to pause you for a minute. You keep breaking up. I don't know what's happening on your end, but you, we're getting about half of your testimony. Maybe speak a little slower, not move your head around so much, I don't know. Go ahead. Now you froze, okay.
I apologize for the port.
Yeah, Liz, we're not, we're not able to hear you. You want to try calling in? We can move on. I think what we'll have to do is, we're going to go ahead then, we won't table this, but we're going to move it towards the end of the agenda.
I'll do it.
Allow Ms. Paul to call in, and can you give her a phone number?
It's the same WebEx.
Okay, same WebEx, so what we'll have you do is just call in and not WebEx in, so we can get your testimony. Can you hear me? Okay, we're going to assume she can hear us, and we'll have her call in, and we'll pick this back up, Commissioners, towards the end of the agenda. All right, so I'm going to leave that open, that public hearing open, but I'm also now going to open a public hearing on Resolution Number 2682, Destruction of Certain Procurement Records. Is anyone here to provide testimony?
Madam Chair, I can provide a little testimony on this.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes, this is for the destruction of some procurement records that we have stored over at Faces. This, these procurement records date back 2016. The five-year repository limit has expired on them, and so we would like to have these records shredded to make room over at Faces. But we do have all these records stored electronically, duplicate copies electronically. So even though we're getting rid of the physical paper records, we have electronic records readily available.
Great, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony? Hearing done, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll take up a motion.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve Resolution Number 2682, as listed on the agenda.
You have a second.
Aye, I'll second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor state aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, I just have it, motion carries. Next up, licenses, and I'll need a motion. It looks like we've got one ratification and three new licenses.
I move to approve and ratify the catering license previously signed on October 14th, 2021, as identified on the agenda. Approve the remaining licenses as listed on the agenda, including three catering permits and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, do we have any discussion? Heather, any comments?
The catering permit from B side is one that was previously approved but had to be modified to fit the time constraints of the event center. So that one, if it looks familiar, it is, and they're just adjusting the time to 10:00 p.m. as opposed to 11:00 p.m. officially approved.
Great, thank you for that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, I just have it, motion carries. Next up, Clerk's Office. Good morning, Trent, how are you?
Great, excited to be here. Elections went off without a hitch yesterday with the start of early voting and our mobile voting site, and things are progressing smoothly. Not a high turnout so far, but that was to be expected. But we have everyone in place and systems in place to have a safe, secure election, so we're excited about it.
Can you tell us where the mobile voting trailer is?
I can, if you give me three minutes to look it up real quick.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah, let people know.
Okay.
All right, anything else from the Clerk's Office?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, next up, Claims Journal, I'll take a motion.
I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated October 15th, 2021, for fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '22. Second.
You have a motion, a second, all those in favor state aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, I just have it, motion carries. Next up, Personnel Actions.
I move to approve the Personnel Actions, as listed on the agenda, and let the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's Office. Second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor state aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, I just have it, motion carries. Next up, Assessor's Office. Mr. McQuaid, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. Just a couple of things to go over this morning. First of all, at Motor Vehicles, things are looking really good. The, last week, the range and wait time was three to six minutes.
Yes.
And so it's getting back to more normal, we're feeling really good about that. The second thing, I just want to mention about sending out the assessment notices on the subsequent roll. There are three rolls that we have each year. There's the property roll, and that's the one that closes in July, when you have the Board of Equalization hearings. Then we have what is called the subsequent roll, and that's the roll that's just closing. And those assessment notices will be going out next week. And then the end of the year, we have what's called the missed property roll, and that's just a collection, anything that we've not gotten before. About just upcoming roll, subsequent roll, we have just about 2,000 parcels on that roll, taxable value of 300 and just about 330 million dollars. The clerk's estimate, one member at the clerk's office, their estimate for the subsequent roll is 60 million dollars, so it's a good, healthy subsequent roll. And it's really nice, because this will offset a lot of those tax cancellations that we've been having because of the change in the homeowners and the homestead law. Total tax cancellation so far because of that change in the homestead exemption. We've taken off just about 1,000, or changed about 1,000 parcels, given them the homestead exemption, totaling just about $113,000. So that, 328,000 taxable in the subsequent roll, because it's really a good, comfortable margin.
So Bob, will we be able to have a financial sort of overview of the HOE, the homeowners' exemption, the change in legislation, how much that actually took away from our tax rolls?
That's 100 and...
For the total amount?
Oh, that's a dollar. I could work with a clerk on that.
I think that'd be important for the legislators to know how much that is.
Well, I can just give you a rough estimate right now. Just a second.
For all of them?
It'd be the total amount, it'd be a rough estimation, but not too far.
Okay, before you're doing that, I'll go ahead then, and we have tax cancellations, which are adjustments, homeowners exemption adjustments, and I can take a motion on that.
I move to approve the tax cancellations, as listed on the agenda, which includes 49 tax cancellations for 2021, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board. Second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, I just have it, motion carries.
Madam Chair, that's about a million dollars in taxes.
About a million?
Yeah.
Okay, pretty significant. Thank you for that. Anything else?
That's everything from the Assessor's Office.
Okay, thank you.
Mobile voting is at Kuna City Hall today.
Is at Kuna City Hall today?
Yeah.
Okay, great, and we're posting that on social media?
It's on social media, our website, on our Facebook account, and Twitter, Instagram, so...
Probably get Elizabeth to repost all that. Is it moving around every, every day, or?
Yes, ma'am.
Every day? Okay, great, thank you. All right, then, we'll move on to Treasurer's Office. Good morning, Ms. Maun.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I just want to elaborate on the tax cancellations. As the assessor noted, we're at approximately 1,000 cancellations so far. And again, these are for the 2021 tax drive that we will be generating bills for in November. So we will make every effort to make sure that these 1,000 parcels are accurately reflected on the tax bills. I did want to note that any cancellation approved by you today or for the next two weeks, so up until November 2nd, should be reflected on the tax bill. However, any cancellations after that, it'll be too late to put them on the current year's bill. So at that point, the bills will go out, and then we will be, as you approve additional cancellations, we will have to process those and then notify the taxpayer of the new liability. So just wanted to make you aware of that. It's a new process for your office, for the assessor, and for us. We're doing everything we can, but we cannot finalize these amounts yet until the levies are certified, which is approximately October 25th. So we're doing our pre-validation checks to make sure the numbers are valid, but again, we can't finalize until we have certified values. So that's the update, is we're doing everything to capture these cancellations in the upcoming bills.
Great, okay, thank you. Bob, you wanted to add something?
If I just may add for anyone who might be listening, on the homestead exemption, up until this year, you had until April 15th to apply for the homestead exemption. If you didn't apply by then, it went on to the next year. But it was the year before last, the legislature passed a law saying that you could apply for the homestead exemption anytime throughout the year up through December 31st. So that's why we're having all of these tax cancellations. And at least the way the system is right now, this is going to be, be normal.
Normal, but a lot of extra work for our offices.
Yes.
Yeah, appreciate your staff's time. Any questions for Elizabeth? Okay, thank you for that report. We'll go ahead and move on for approval of minutes, I'll need a motion.
I move to approve the minutes, as identified on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
We have a second? We have a motion, a second, all those in favor state aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, I just have it, motion carries. Next up, Expo Idaho and after Expo Idaho, we'll go ahead and go back to the resolution. Do we have Ms. Paul? Okay, so go ahead with the motion for the interim event, the Cinera.
I move to approve the one interim event agreement, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all those in favor state aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, I just have it, motion carries. Next, we're going to go back to Resolution 2680, and we left the public hearing open to allow testimony by Liz Paul. Liz Paul, are you on the phone now?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, you'll have up to two minutes, go ahead.
Okay, well, Madam Chairwoman and Commissioners, thank you. I, so I wanted to bring two things to your attention. One is the master plan that the Ada County Commissioners, you guys are doing right now, that's not complete. The other is the general investigation that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the Garden City are partnering in for flood management in that area. So what I'm mostly concerned about is the language in that resolution that says you want to move it adjacent to the Boise River. Well, adjacent to the Boise River means the floodway or the floodplain, and those areas are not appropriate for the type of activity that now goes on at Ladybird Park, where you're having Little League, and, you know, people need to be there, you've got a lot of investment in that turf, and, you know, the ground, and if it floods, it wrecks it. It's perfectly appropriate for open space and for non-hardened trails and whatnot. And what we're hoping, what I'm hoping, is that the county will amend that language or postpone the beginning of this process until there's more clarity as to exactly what the best use for public health and safety is for the area where the stables are right now, and that floodway, floodplain area. Thank you very much, and I'll stand for questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Paul? Okay, any further testimony? Nope, we'll go ahead then and close the public hearing. Just a question for, for Lorna from our PA's office. With the language that's in this resolution, adjacent on the back page, does that commit this board to any specific area at this point? Or is that something that'll be negotiable with the parks?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, it would, it doesn't commit you to a specific area. As you're well aware, adjacent to the Boise River extends from the RV Park all the way down to, what's the road down there, Bob?
In Brownington Road?
Yeah, so it's a huge, it's a huge area. And this is an opportunity to just get the process moving, because typically, these things take years.
All right, any questions for, from the board? Go ahead and take up a motion.
I'd move to approve Resolution Number 2680, as listed on the agenda. Second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor state aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, I just have it, motion carries. Thanks for your testimony, Ms. Paul, and looks like we've got lots of leeway. Okay, let's go ahead. Thank you. We're going to move to Parks and Waterways, and I'll need a motion for the events.
I move to approve the five Barber Park Education and Event Center agreements, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board. Second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor state aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, I just have it, motion carries. Okay, we have a number of agreements to take up here, and I just wanted to pull out Agreement Number 14440 for our director at the landfill, Thomas Ott, to provide some public testimony on. Just a couple of minutes, this is an agreement with CH2M Hill for $939,272, so it's a significant amount of money. So we wanted the public, for you to weigh in and let the public know why we're spending this kind of money. I think it's Ravine 4, yeah, North Ravine.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This is just a standard agreement to begin construction on our stage four. So as you know, we have multiple landfill stages that we're going through. We're on stage three, lift D, right now. This is to have our, our next stage four designed and begin construction with Jacobs to continue our phase through the NRC. So this is just moving on to the next stage, as you know, stage three is filling up slightly faster than we had anticipated, so put us ahead just a while. This is to get final elevations and then to get the engineering contract and design done for this stage. There's not really too much to it, other than, other than that.
Okay, all right, thank you, Thomas. Any questions? All right, then, we're going to move to Agreement 12818-3-21. That was, I think, questioned Garden City lease space at the courthouse. Joe Hippler, is there anything that you would like to comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So I don't want to take a position as to whether you should or shouldn't renew this lease. I think that's between you and the Garden City prosecutor. What I would ask, though, is that you look at this intentionally in terms of space. I'm not sure exactly what the Garden City prosecutor uses the space for, I'm not sure, and they may still be prosecuting some cases on conflict or something. My understanding is that, I think it's Boise City is, maybe, I can't remember which, is prosecuting those cases. What I'm here to say is, if space does, for one reason or another, become available, as you know, the courts are running out of space in this building and are in desperate need of space, and so if that space were to come available, I'm here to ask you to consider us to use that space. We have plenty of things that we need to use the space for. As you know, we've come to you in the past and will come to you again in the future with respect to a master facilities plan to move out of the building, the administrative offices that are not the court offices because of the need for space. And so, you know, we would also ask that, as you look at each individual space, keeping that in mind, ask, is this the best place for that office going forward? I don't know what the Garden City prosecutor uses the space for, and certainly, there's a legitimate use, and you want to provide that space, that's, that's, you know, obviously fine, and I don't have a problem with that. I guess what I'm just asking is, if you decide that there is a better use for that space, you decide that that space is going to come open, we would ask that we be able to use that space to, sorry. We are on top of each other now. We are making offices out of closets, literally, here for court, and so we are starting to feel some of the impacts of employee morale in terms of space. We've, for example, taken court reporters out of their individual offices and put and put them in a portable environment with some more leeway for them to work at home when they're not here, needing to be here at court. That's caused some court reporters to misunderstand that. Same with law clerks. We think those were appropriate decisions that we've made in order to utilize the space as efficiently as possible. But we are short of space, and so we do ask you to remember us if space does come available and for those administrative offices to look carefully at whether that space is best here or in another county building.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate that testimony. Any comments or any questions for Judge Hippler? Comments in general from the commissioners? No? Okay, then. Thank you. And I believe this agreement can be terminated, thirty days termination in the contract. So if something comes up and we need the space, then I think we can move quickly on it.
Well, Madam Chair, actually, I would make a motion that we table Agreement Number 12818-3-21 for another week to hear any specific proposal that the court might offer for that space.
Andy, was this tabled before?
Yes, Madam Chair.
So this will be the second time we're tabling it?
It was tabled and then it was removed from the agenda completely while it was redrafted, and then it's been placed back on the agenda. So it's either maybe the second time. I'm not 100% sure.
Okay. Commissioner Beck, any thoughts?
Well, it seems as though we removed that agreement to allow our staff to adjust the times when we could terminate the agreement to thirty days, which seems to me to be more than adequate if there's a need that arises in the interim. And so I wouldn't have any problem taking, agreeing with the new agreement to give us thirty days if we have another need for the property.
Okay.
The space.
You want to go ahead and make a motion then to approve the agreements?
Yes. I'll make that motion to approve the agreement.
Okay, we have a motion to approve all thirty agreements. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
I think he authorized the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Yeah, and the motion authorizes the chairman to sign the documents on behalf of the board. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, I just have it. Motion carries. Any further discussion? Hearing then. Thank you, thank you, Judge. We'll keep you guys in mind always. Okay, meeting adjourned. All right, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 19th, 2021. The time is 9:34 a.m. The Board of County Commissioners is in session to meet with emergency medical services staff on the district and in their open business meeting. And we have all three commissioners with us. Also on bridge, we have Bethany Calley, Steve Rutherford. We have Commissioner Beck, and in the room with us, we have Director Rain, and we have Commissioner Davidson. Any changes to this agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, there are not.
All right then, let's go ahead, and we'll take up Claims Journal. I'll need a motion.
I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated October 15th, 2021, regarding EMS expenditures for FY '21 and FY '22.
We have a second?
Second, the motion.
Okay. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, I just have it. Motion carries. Next up, I'll need a motion on the personnel actions.
I move to approve the personnel action as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the commissioner's office.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, I just have it. Motion carries. Next up, we have five agreements. Any discussion on the agreements or any comments by the director?
Two of the agreements, Madam Chair, are for renewal with Bonneville Collection. It's the collection agency we had before Wakefield, and so they still have claim to the claims that they were processing. The first agreement is actually our agreement with Idaho State University as we actually provide the personnel for the instruction at Idaho State University. Rob Hackwith is the lead instructor down there, the program director. And the other one is just another training site agreement with an agency that does CPR.
Okay, great. All right, so the one collection agency is just one that we're no longer renewing new contracts. It's just keeping the ones open that they already have running. Okay. All right, any questions? Commissioner Beck?
Nope, no questions.
All right, Commissioner Davidson?
Um, no.
All right, you want to go ahead and make the motion?
I move to approve the five agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, I just have it. Motion carries. Next up, updates and COVID updates.
COVID update, our data is indicating, you know, we hit a high of about fifteen patients on a moving average per day about two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago. And now, you know, kind of a glimmer of hope is that we're down to a moving average of around nine a day. So it's nice to see that data actually has peaked, and we're on a downward trend now. Unfortunately, the hospitals are still not in a great situation. And just, you know, with this being kind of the fourth surge that we've seen, I would say that typically, their improvement lags behind us about two weeks before we start to see improvement there. So we'll be keeping a close eye on that. And I've got Kami O'Akins, our Emergency Preparedness Officer, meets on a daily basis with the hospitals to keep abreast of what's going on with them, so.
Is there a conversation about ending the crisis standards of care in Timson?
I, Madam Chair, commissioners, I have not heard any conversations about ending crisis standards of care. In fact, Cootney, up in northern Idaho, Cootney Health System just hit their record ICU patient number. I just read that this morning. So, you know, we still have a pretty serious issue in the state as far as the hospitals go. But, you know, I'm really hoping that with our data, that we'll start to see the hospital data start to trend downward.
Anything more that you feel like the county can do to help promote people getting vaccinated?
Madam Chair, commissioners, you know, I think just getting the message out there however we can that, you know, it's not too late to get vaccinated, and it's a good thing to do. We know that getting the vaccine doesn't mean that you're not going to get the virus, but the chances of you getting seriously ill and hospitalized go down significantly. You know, I think the news of General, or former Secretary of State Colin Powell, you know, has kind of renewed that conversation because I think people worried that with his death, you know, he was vaccinated, but he also had several serious health conditions. You know, so I did see kind of a renewed effort even after that from the federal government to say, get your vaccine. Outside of, you know, I've seen a lot of news in the last few days about states that have required a vaccine mandate where they're losing a lot of employees. And I would certainly worry about that for my agency. You know, I know it's been a struggle for some of the fire agencies in northern Idaho that have contracts or response areas in Washington that they're really concerned that they're going to lose a significant portion of their workforce with a vaccine mandate. I think, you know, getting the message out there and letting people know that the vaccine's still available. You know, the boosters are starting to become available. It looks like the FDA may be recommending some sort of mix and match. The one that I heard this morning was specific to Johnson &amp; Johnson, that they may be recommending a booster of an mRNA vaccine for that that would be available. So I think, you know, just kind of, you know, continuing that messaging and get vaccinated, that's the one thing that's most likely to get us out of this mess.
How healthy are your staff right now?
They're still suffering, no doubt about it. You know, we, this has been, I've never seen our department like this. You know, the amount of overtime that people have had to work. We've had to brown out a station several times, you know. The station that we brown out is right down in this area. In fact, it's the one over there by St. Luke's because there's so much coverage that surrounds that district. But it definitely has an impact on my crews when we have to brown a station out just because we don't have somebody available to come in and work. So they're suffering, but I do appreciate the board's efforts in looking at ARPA funds to be able to, you know, offer something to the employees to get them some help. And I did submit a proposal, a formal proposal yesterday to address the, I don't know if we want to call it hazard pay or what have you, but the one-time payment in addition to the OT incentives that I talked about. And so that went to Kevin Bittner yesterday, so.
Did a copy go to Steve Rutherford?
Yeah, I believe Steve's got a copy of that, too.
Okay, great, good.
So I appreciate the board's willingness to help us out because we really need help. One of the big concerns right now from my folks, too, is the number of positions that fire departments are hiring. So Boise Fire is bringing on eighteen in January. Eagle Fire is bringing on fourteen. And then over the course of probably the next year and a half, Meridian will be bringing on, I believe, it's twenty-four, twenty-six. And so when we hear those kinds of numbers, you know, my crews certainly, some of them are applying for the fire departments. But then, you know, the people that aren't are left worried about, you know, how are we going to get people to come and work for us? Because the workforce has certainly shrunk during the pandemic. The number of available paramedics and EMTs out there has definitely decreased. This last hiring, we have an academy running right now with twelve new hires. But we had seventeen paramedic applicants and ended up with two that we could hire. So we had thirty-five EMT applicants, and we hired ten of those. So definitely, the labor market has become much tighter for us. And that's a very consistent theme across the country with agencies. There are many agencies that I talked to at a conference down in Tucson in July that were holding, you know, if not hundreds of vacancies, you know, forty to fifty vacancies and browning out stations, much like we're experiencing here. So it's impacted the industry for sure.
And what's the starting pay difference between the fire departments and the RMS?
So Boise Fire, they start out during their probationary year as a firefighter without being a paramedic at $55,000 a year. A starting paramedic is $53.80. But at the end of that first year, they rapidly go up. So after the first year, I think they get nearly an $11,000 increase after they complete probation. So at that point, you know, we're competing with somebody who's making $65,000, $66,000 a year. And HR has done a good job at doing a market analysis, and I see Bethany, oh, she's still on. So we know that our pay is lagging and that we need to increase the starting wage for paramedics. What HR is recommending the paramedics start at is $63.80. And, or $63.40, sorry. And so we're way behind that, but unfortunately, just the way that our budget is structured, if I were to jump that raise up and implement that today, we would basically run out of fund balance in about three to three and a half years. And so that's why we're working so hard to try to develop new revenue streams. And I don't, you know, I've talked about it a few times, but one of the issues that we face is certainly our levy is just so low. And I know that's a big challenge to try to increase the levy. You have to convince two-thirds of the voters in the entire county to raise their taxes. And typically, people don't want to do that. But at the same time, if it's an impact to the service that they would receive, you know, an ambulance coming to their house, maybe that would change their minds. So it's a big issue for us.
If we went that route, do you have, have you had conversations with any legislators or anyone else that would be a proponent with us?
Not at this point, Madam Chair, no, I haven't, not with any legislators. But, you know, if the board wanted me to start that work, I certainly can.
Well, why don't you come back next week prepared to talk to us a little bit more in detail about that?
Okay.
And then also, at some point, we'd love to have you invite Mark Niemeyer to come over and, you know, you guys talk about the strategic planning session, the offside, where you're at, next steps, what we can expect as outcomes.
Yeah, Madam Chair, commissioners, next week, on the 28th, there's the work session for the elected officials. It'll be three hours from noon to three that day. We're actually going to provide lunch to go through the elected official exercise of that whiteboard thing that we've done.
Okay, great, maybe that's going to be the venue then. Okay. Fantastic. Great. Any questions for Director Rain?
Do we hire people with criminal records, or what's the policy there?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Davidson, we do a criminal history, a criminal background check on folks. You can't actually get a license as an EMT or a paramedic if you have certain criminal offenses on your record. So any felony is an automatic disqualifier where they can't even get a license, so. But we do do a criminal background check. We follow the county's guidelines on many of the things. You know, for a DUI, we require a minimum of three years since a DUI before their application would get through the process. Any kind of crimes against children are taken very seriously, and the state typically will deny a license for that. We also do a Medicare debarment check to make sure that they weren't involved in an agency that had committed fraud against Medicare. The reason we do that is if we have anybody in our agency that is on that list, that means that we can't bill CMS for services, which is a significant portion of our budget. So we have to be pretty careful with that.
Mr. Beck?
I'm good.
Well, thank you, Sean. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we'll look forward to having you come back next week or two, whatever's convenient for you to let us know what that would look like if we were to pass legislation and see if it's even remotely a possibility. Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned. Next up, Legal at 10.